You're live.
I'm live. Is it not Memorex? Okay. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:46. At sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Mozzarella.
Here.
Mr. Parek.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairman Iraquin.
Present.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Let's start off the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as one.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. We have, uh, um, correspondence first, and then we'll go into the resolutions. Uh, we have a letter from, uh, this is from Mr. O'Neill regarding application 18:34, Subaru Paul Miller Subaru, requesting an extension of time for variance, I guess, to begin construction. They're, they're mentioning that there's a, there was the COVID-19 pandemic that brought everything to a screeching halt, and now there's other delays because of, you know, because we're just not back to where we should, we should be. Mr. O'Neill, what are you, what are you looking for? Are you here? If you'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're looking for another year for that application. The applicant is getting ready to start construction now.
Okay. Any objections by the board?
Which application?
1834 Paul Miller Subaru. And they just recently purchased more property up there also, so I guess.
Yes, that is correct.
So it's.
It's the one right over there, across the street?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just past the porch, past the porch. Do I have a motion to grant an extension of one year? So move.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? We'll make that till June 30th, 2023. How's that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that good?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that takes care of Paul Miller. Now we have the sign. Mr. Duncan White. I understand there's been a scheduling conflict or a COVID issue? Is it a?
It's a, yeah, I'm just gonna prefer to say witness availability issue.
Okay. We don't want to get into medical or anything like that.
Rather not in an open meeting.
Okay. Uh, October 31st, can I?
We've already sent a letter granting all extensions through the end of October.
Okay.
You have, sir? Yes, with authority, my client.
Our motion to, um, carry the Pacific Outdoor Application 1921 to October 19th without firm the notice and with an extension through October 31st, 2022. Your motion to that effect?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Was there a second? I didn't hear the second. Somebody's second. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. You don't have anything else on tonight, do you?
I do not. Have a nice evening.
All right, you too.
Ninety.
Okay, so we now have.
We have, I don't mean to interrupt, but we do have people here for this billboard. I don't know if they caught what was going on.
Yeah. Billboard case has been carried, if you're, if you're here for that case. Did you hear that it's carried to October 22nd?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, October 19th. 2022, yes. Okay, uh, Application 2122 Susan Farfaro.
Resolutions?
The resolutions, these are resolutions.
Yeah.
Uh, resolution to dismiss application. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
That's it.
Now we have Application 2119 Herrera, resolution to dismiss. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. Application 21104, 20, 21104, resolution to dismiss. That was the Tanvini Green Estate Realty LLC. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Snyder, uh, Willins.
Yes.
Did I say Ready?
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes.
Who made that motion?
I did.
Dave.
Okay.
I have a question. The fact that these things are dismissed, do we tell somebody in case there are violations?
They're sent back to code enforcement.
Okay.
Is that automatic?
Yep.
Okay. She does her job.
Application 2212, 2216, 2154, and 2208. Do I have a motion to move those resolutions?
Move. Second.
Any discussion? Willins, you're not on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does somebody else move it?
I move this.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. Agenda. Anything else, Nora?
No, that's it.
Application 2189 Claudia Feely and Brent Knudson, 41 Oakdale Road, C variance to construct a detached garage and driveway expansion. Good evening.
Ma'am, are you both going to testify? You're gonna testify?
Yes.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, you're Claudia. Okay. I think she should probably come.
She probably should come up and get sworn, just in case she has to say anything.
Um, ma'am, raise your right hand as well. Do you swear affirm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're Claudia Feely?
Yes.
Okay, you're sworn. And ma'am, for the record, uh, can you state and spell your name?
J.A.Y. M.I.C.R.E. E. Siegel.
And you're a licensed architect?
I am.
All your licenses are in full force in effect?
Yes.
And you've been qualified either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey? All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, um, uh, expert witnesses are qualified.
Okay, you may sit down. Just make sure you use the microphone when you talk. Okay, so you have a, um, you're in an R3 zone. So it's kind of a funky lot, it looks like. They don't say that in a derogatory manner. There's a lot of funky lots in this town. Um, you've got, uh, R3 is a 15,000 square foot requirement. You're only at 11,816. So you're starting out with a substandard lot. Okay. Uh, you want a side yard, detached garage, two and a half feet, building coverage 21.84, and impervious coverage 33.87. Why don't you tell us about the application?
Okay, um, my client would like to build a detached garage, two cars detached garage, 24 by 24. Because of course, as I get older, it's just more and more difficult to not have a garage.
You, you need to speak into the mic. Remove your mask.
Yeah, we're not hearing you.
Hard to hear you.
Um, is that better?
Yes.
Sorry.
It's okay.
My client would like to build a 24 by 24 foot freestanding garage detached from the house so that they can, uh, park their cars undercover. And, um, they'd like to keep it kind of close to the house so that they don't have as much driveway currently. Currently, they have a lot of driveway that needs to be either shoveled or snowblowed or plowed. And that, that's really all that they're asking for. Um, the lot, as you mentioned, is an undersized lot by roughly, let me see, it's, um.
4,000 square feet.
I think it's like 21% underneath, under what, what you're required. Um, and many of these, at least one of these, the maximum lot coverage would not be required if it was a full-size lot. And, um, the maximum building coverage is currently, you know, they're over it already. So we're starting, we're starting from behind as, as, as goes. The side yard, um, the garage will be built parallel to the existing shed that's currently on the property with the back corner at the 2.5, two and a half feet. Um, it will parallel that, so on the same angle. And the front corner will be six, about 6.6. So it will be over the side yard. So from the street, it will appear to match the side yard that's currently required in that zone. Building coverage, the lot is currently non-conforming, so if, um, it was conforming, we would only need a 17.2% instead of 21.8%. And the maximum lot coverage, uh, we're already at, uh, basically 29.4. And, um, if the lot was conforming, we would only again need 26.6, which would be underneath 30% what's required in the zone. The lot is surrounded on three sides by parkland that the town owns. In the rear is the ball field and park. The, to the right is the accessway back to the ball field. And in front is all, um, the mini park, okay? The Rainbow Lakes Mini Park. So essentially, the only side of this property would be the, the left-hand side where there, um, is a residential property. We're not affecting that side of, of the property at all. All of the properties in this area are very densely packed. It appears to me, obviously, I can't go out and measure them all, but it appears to me that they all sort of sit really tight in their, their properties. This one, while it may sit very tight to the side yard because of all the breathing room around it, it won't, will not appear to be as tight as these other properties. And that's pretty much where we stand.
What is along the property line that's common with the parking lot? Is there fence, trees? There's a side, there's a driveway there, right?
I'm sorry.
Along the side of the property that's abutting the park?
Park, yeah.
The park, park?
It's, it's a driveway?
Yeah, is it right up tight to the property line? Is there trees or fencing?
Um, trees, trees.
Trees along that line? All right. So the space between the house and the proposed garage, what's going in there?
Mostly grass, but we will have to, if you look on the site plan that we provided you, we do have to enlarge a little bit of it. I like to make it so that it'll swing.
That's not, that's not my question. The other question is, why can't you move the garage a bit closer to the house so you don't have to have this encroachment on the 2.5 or 6 foot on this property line?
We, we looked at a lot of different options, at least four or five different options. And, um, they felt that it was just too overpowering to be so close that some of the options that we had were. Sorry. Were 10 feet, you know, as close as 10 feet to the house. And then their bedroom is there, there's a window there, they'll be looking out onto the garage. So they felt that if they pulled it away a little bit, they could put some garden, they're very into gardening, they could put some gardening in there.
That's why you're here, because that garage is encroaching on the borderline of the property owner and next neighbor, right?
Yes.
If you move the garage over, you won't be here, right?
But from the front of the property, sorry, I know I keep doing this. From the front of the property, it will be within that six feet. It's only at the very back corner.
And it's only, there's no residence next to it?
Correct, and there is no residence next to them, and there's no residence across the street from them to look at a lot where it's kind of cramped.
Can I go back to the trees to put the, um, foundation and, uh, pad there? Are you gonna have to cut, do any excavation? Are you gonna, are the trees gonna survive?
No, it's a flat lot. There's, they'll be very minimal, um.
Okay.
Cut and fill or anything like that.
You may want to talk to the board about coverage, because you got a side door in this garage, and I doubt you're just gonna walk across grass. You're gonna put something down.
The side door would be used for, uh, you know.
To walk over the house, right?
Yes.
So are you gonna walk across the grass there? Are you gonna put sidewalk down or something?
I'm gonna defer that one to my client. A paver that would match what we already have though.
Is there pavers there now?
Yes.
For the existing walk?
I'm sorry?
For the existing walk, it's paved?
Yes, yes.
You want to create a walk, though. There's no walk there now.
There is no walk.
So you want to create a paver walk? So you need another variance.
There would be a small amount, right?
They need a coverage variance now.
So there would be an additional small amount. But we could perhaps exchange some of what we have for that few feet.
Some bed.
What's that?
Some bed.
I mean, you have sidewalks going out to Oakdale. There's no sidewalks in that neighborhood, right?
No, no.
So do you ever use them? Do you ever walk on them or use them? Or are people pull up and park in the street, walk into your house on those walkways?
Yes.
That's what they're for?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm trying to figure out what you would take away. I don't see anything.
But the driveway you currently have, if you expand it up there, you don't need that walkway. So Mrs. Chalke's.
You're gonna need one here or somewhere. You know what you might want to do? Switch the, the walkway that you've got running over to the new driveway expansion and take, put those stones and some more between the door, new door and the driveway and the, and existing walkway. It would make more sense, too, to, to get out of the car, you're gonna use that driveway.
You mean, it's more sense right now?
Yeah, get rid of that.
Okay.
You got it.
We could do that.
Okay. I'm not sure exactly what we just agreed to, but.
Well, there's a little piece here.
Put it over, put it over here.
No, yeah. Just move that walkway up. Take that walkway.
Right.
Okay, so you want something like that.
Instead of coming out back out.
The door that comes out of the garage, where's the door in the house? If I'm going from the garage to the house, where's the door to the house?
The door to the house is, um, I don't, I don't know what, what site plans you have there.
We've got the survey.
You don't have anything like this, right?
That's what we have.
Okay. So where, where it's marked up?
Yeah.
You can see the steps and there's a little porch. That's where you come up and come into the house.
Okay, so where the walkway curves to that?
The, like, the front door is parallel sort of with what would become the new garage?
What, where's the sidewalk from the garage to that either walkway or front door is gonna be a lot longer than that little stretch between the?
Right.
So that's not a fair swap.
No, but I think it's practical. I mean, it just, you.
Right, but she's still gonna be, the impervious coverage is still not accurate now.
A little bit, right. So, so.
Is there any other swap that we could have?
Like 3 by 20, 24, that's what this is. Take 75. So we're talking 75 square. 75 square feet based on a 1,400, uh, 1,100. 1,100, uh, 1% is 114 feet. So you're talking about three quarters of a percent. Yeah, so how about if we just round this up? Yeah, you got 30, you gotta take some away. 34% plus or minus? Yeah.
So make it 34% instead of 33.2%.
Yeah, what we're gonna do is we're gonna increase your impervious coverage up to 34%. It's not gonna, you know, there's, it's not gonna be a showstopper. Any other questions by the board?
Just wanted to mention that there's a letter from the attachment engineer regarding the, because the area being disturbed is greater than 400 square feet.
You.
It's a minor, it's a minor drainage issue. Because it's gonna have, um, more drainage back there, looking at the roof line. And, um, the applicant has to, proper attachment engineer and carbon on.
Right, we received the letter because we were supposed to be here three months ago. So yes, we have that, and yes, we will, of course, fulfill that.
You'll comply with that?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Thank you, Chas. Anything else by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
Not really, no.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. Someone like to make a recommendation?
Given the, uh, the adjustments we've made and the fact that she's complying with the engineer's runoff report, I would be voting in favor of this application.
Someone frame a resolution so we can move on?
I'll do it.
Thank you, sir.
You weren't even here for it.
I know that, but you're speaking up.
An application. For the record, Ms. Snyder is here?
Yes, I do.
Application number 2189 Claudia Feely and Brent Knudson at 41 Oakdale Road, Block 106, Lot 14, in the R3 zone. I recommend the board grants of C variance to construct a detached garage and driveway expansion contrary to Section 430-35, Columns 8, 10, and 13, uh, subject to the removal of that small sidewalk and changing the impervious coverage to 34% and compliance with the engineer's report.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Prisa, oh, excuse me, Mozzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize this two weeks.
In two weeks?
And then you'll be, in two weeks, we'll memorialize this, and you'll be free to proceed.
That's great.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Application 2211 Ned Zap, Arap, 17 Sagamore Road. I hope I pronounced that right.
Sir, raise your right hand. You swear affirm testimony before the board's true self you got? And you're the owner of this property, correct? Thank you.
You're looking for a C variance to legalize the driveway, front walk, and patio. You are, let's see, in an R3 zone, and you have a legal lot, 15,000 plus. Plan and design standards, driveway is 27 feet, plan and design saves setback 4.2 feet, and impervious coverage. Want to tell us how you got here tonight?
Everything was existing, so I, I did it. The front patio, the driveway, and the rear patio without permits.
When you say existing, when you bought the house?
When I bought the house.
It was all there?
It was, it was all there. It was all there, except the driveway, I did extend, expand it a little bit more.
Define a little bit more, away from the house?
No, it wasn't away, not from away from the house, like towards the, when you first went into the driveway, I expanded it there to make it even, even run. But then it curves back into the existing.
It looks like it's conforming out at this curb, but it's not conforming at the back corner.
The back, it's, it's a.
It's a little tilted.
Yeah, it's a whole square.
So you wired that?
I did.
Because you have multiple family cars driving? What, what about the light fixtures there in front of the?
Well, it was a, it was a mail, that's the mailbox. So one of them is a mailbox, and all I did was just mimic the one that was right next to it. And there was a driveway, correct?
That is a.
Those are light, like light posts, but right underneath it's a mailbox.
Is it allowed or is it a cord enforcement or what is this?
Light is there for many houses.
So you have two pillars at the front of the driveway?
That's correct.
And one of them you built?
I built, I built one of them, correct. Well, both of them, just to match. I mean, it was an existing mailbox there, right? So instead of a mailbox.
On that pillar or just the mailbox?
And then my wife was like, hey, let's just make something pretty out of it, like with light, lights on it. So I.
So you made that?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, they, that they don't say is a variance. It's in the street. Oh, well.
Yeah.
Whatever. So the patio was there, the front walk was there, the driveway was there, and you expanded it how much?
Oh, I, I don't recall.
You've got to recall.
I, I don't, I don't.
Try to stretch your memory. You've got to tell us.
One car length, two car length?
One, two car length, call it.
Yeah, two lengths?
How about width?
About a car on each side.
On each side, so 10 foot on each side, 20 feet?
So when you were pulling in, you, it was, one car was able to pull in, and then it would expand to two cars to pull in comfortably.
In the back?
In the back, right. Because that's where the garage is to come out.
Okay.
So right when you pull in, now two cars can sit right there instead of one. So one.
And how did you get here? Somebody asked you that question earlier?
I think somebody, there was a complaint, but another neighbor, I don't know what happened. Another neighbor was, the town ended up coming for, I guess he was parking a commercial vehicle, whatever, make a long story short. He ended up seeing, obviously, he seen the house was, was done, and he came knocking on the door and he goes, hey, have you pulled any permits for this? And I, I didn't.
But with all due respect, I understand it was all there, but what's your own pictures here? It looks like you expanded the driveway quite a bit.
One car, no, so a few...
No, one car width.
One car width, yes.
That's 10 to 12 feet.
Yeah.
Is there any comments from the town engineer? Chad?
No, I didn't see any in the package.
I mean, you would think this would be something he would, he should be addressing drainage.
No, they, they didn't respond. The engineer, township engineer.
Have you thought of putting any landscaping around your house?
That's all landscaping is going to be.
Huh?
All landscaping is going to be right after the wall.
What are you doing?
I'm landscaping over there.
You got to put some along the driveway?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because along that driveway, right after, if you're looking at the house on the left-hand side, I have about at least, I don't know if you have the...
I have a picture of you.
Yeah, I think I have at least another five feet. So I'm, I'm gonna, we're gonna run all planters and everything across that side as well.
On the driveway side?
On both sides, yeah.
Okay. So the person who did this work for you, did they mention to you possibly impervious coverage might be an issue with that big of a paved driveway area? You just ask them to do it, they did.
Why would they do that?
They want to make money? Ah, dear, dear, dear. Well, it's not horrible, but, and the fact that he's going to landscape it may make it look a little less like a parking lot, because right now it looks like a parking lot, didn't you say in the pictures? I don't know, what's...
Why does you need to go so wide?
I have, I have a lot of cars. I have a lot of cars, and, and it was, when you used to pull in, it would, it would all mud, it would be all mud, right when you, right when one car could pull in.
How many cars do you park in on the driveway?
Like eliminating, like four cars.
How many cars do you have?
Four.
Four?
Looks like this, this driveway could hold.
Yeah, if my family come over this time.
Right. The neighbor to your, to, the neighbor to your left there didn't object at all to you expanding your driveway, right?
Was very happy on the way that I made a point.
Did, did you make any changes to the patio in the back?
No.
And when did you buy this house?
Five years ago, four years, five years ago.
That patio was there, same pay versus all?
No, I ripped it out and I put all...
You didn't make it any bigger?
I did make it bigger.
Well, that, that was the question here. That was...
That's the question I asked.
You didn't answer this one properly.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So the pa, patio, you made it bigger?
Correct.
How, 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 wait, you made it?
600 more square feet.
No, you couldn't have. Oh, that's the front.
The back. And you, did you make any changes to the paper walk in the front?
Yes, but that was existing.
So you didn't make any changes?
Well, it's all new. No changes, no.
Okay, but, you know, to the point that you didn't answer his question before properly, did you expand that walkway, yes or no?
In the back, yes.
In the front?
No.
Same footprint, ripped out the whole ribs, put nicer bricks in. So the patio in the back was approximately 6...
Blessing that, probably, probably 500. It's 1,000, it's exactly 1,000 square feet that patio. On the back.
So the, so the four cars that you got in your lot, obviously you have four driver's license holding residence in your, in your residence? Oh, it's just four for you?
One's my wife's, and three of them is, one I use for work, two for pleasure, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Get up and find out. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear there's, there's somebody else in town that's got three cars. They borrow my...
Well, that was not my point. My point was kind of addressing what you said, Mr. Chairman, regards that this place looking like a parking lot. So I'm trying to just...
No, I'm just making a wise, no, I'm just making a wise comment. Ms. Schneider, had nothing to do with your question.
No, but my question was kind of springboarding off your comment earlier.
Is that pool still there?
No.
They calculated as part of the coverage.
So you took the pool out?
I took the pool out.
But it's still part of the coverage? So if that was out, the coverage actually...
17 Sagamore Road.
I, I don't know how much coverage the pool suffered.
The zoning report has less than your survey shows, so I guess they took it off already.
So in light of the fact that we're dealing with an existing situation, can we pretty this up a little bit? You know, I don't know, landscaping?
Well, that's what he said, he said he was...
Will you put some greenery here, here? I mean...
He said he was, he's in...
Okay, gotcha.
So I, um...
More than welcome to come by the house right after Memorial Weekend, the landscaper is starting.
It's more than just landscaping, it's...
The whole, the whole, everything, doing everything.
Flowers, trees, bushes, what?
Everything, yeah. The whole, everything.
Doesn't tell me anything. I have a big imagination, everything.
Doing side of the front, landscaping the whole, the whole house.
Does, does he have a landscaping plan?
Of cour, uh, I don't, I don't.
You have a landscaper doing it?
A landscaper is...
Can you give us a ballpark what that might be costing you?
It's costing me 22,000.
That should be a lot of landscaping.
It is. That's why I'm saying it's gonna look very pretty one.
I hope, I hope.
I mean, he was the cheapest one.
Okay.
Not for 22,000.
Are you putting a wall park between your property and the property facing the house to your left?
Is there going to be a buffer? So, so where the, so where the pillars are, it's gonna be like mulch around there with planters.
Okay.
Like, it's pretty plants. Then along the side, um, like especially with the driveway where, where we come out, like towards the back, like the beginning where his house starts to like the end of that driveway, it's gonna be green giants just across going there with black mulch. And then, we're good neighbors, so he was like, hey, Nick, I don't want you to put green giants across the whole thing, so let's just leave it flat grass. So I was, just where the pillars are, and then where his house starts to the end of the driveway will be green giants. Same thing with the other side of the house, with that other, with, with my other neighbor, it will be green giants coming across. So I'm basically...
Yeah, to, to soften up the, to the chairman's point, the massive driveway, right? To soften it up, the aesthetics?
A look, a look. The airport will calm down. No claims will be...
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. Uh, comment from somebody? I, it's, it's, it's not a horrible situation. I don't know if we would have approved this if it hadn't already been done. And sometimes I regret, you know, the inability to put toothpaste back in the tube. Can, is there any other comment?
Yeah, as long as we dress this up, Mr. Chairman, you know what I mean? Do whatever we can do to soften the aesthetics. I agree. I, I really want to stop the culture of doing and then apologizing later. And then, and then all of a sudden handcuffing us to do what really is best for the public at large. And so, you know, that, and to Mr. Kaplan's point and your point, you know, we need to dress this up to the point where aesthetically, we still look green out there. Period.
I think you should make a condition on what he described, whether he liked green giants or some, something else. I don't think we care as long as it's evergreen or substantial size. And down by the street and up by the neighbor's home, probably makes some sense. In the resolution? In the resolution. Okay. And the township forester would agree with the plantings of landscapers? Is that important or not? We can ask him to run everything by the township forester to make sure it's in keeping with...
Yes, yes.
Put that in also. Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Recommendation would be you would have the township forester approve your landscaping plan.
So we're not, when, when, I, I did the fence already, we did the permit, our fence is covered there. But when I, when I asked him, I said, do I need to pull a permit for landscaping? And then without, he says, no, just...
We're not asking you to get a permit. We're saying that if you want your variance, we have certain conditions we want you to follow.
Okay.
Because now we're in the driver's seat.
Yes.
And all we're saying is, take your, take your landscape plan and go to the township forester and say, is this, is this look good to you? Is this gonna be a significant amount of, um, buffering for what I have? And I'm sure if you're gonna spend $22,000, I'd be surprised if he didn't, he didn't agree with it, but it's just... Do you agree to that condition?
If, if you're spending 22,000?
Oh, he agrees.
You need to, to allocate the portion of what we're asking for to be, you know, replenished to the point, and then sacrifice whatever it is, a few extra lawn mowings, I don't care what it is. But we need to make this look aesthetically pleasing for the neighbors, the abutting neighbors, and just the, the overall global look of your neighborhood.
I, I think you need to stop by and really look at it. I think the pictures are just overwhelming, but...
This has a lot to do with the expansive driveway, sir. I'm, your, your house is lovely. I, I'm, your house is...
Even the driveway?
I, I, I looked. No, it's, it's a, it's a big driveway, okay? And it's, it's, it's a situation where you did and asking for approval later. This is, this board is not, I, I, I'm telling you, this board is not in the routine of doing that, where people just abuse the statutes and they come back for, to, to apologize.
Concerned with the forester.
And we have no neighbors objecting, so let's move on. Okay, so based on the, the conditions that we're putting, do I have someone direct a, a resolution?
Application 2211 Ned, Ned Zap, Arap, 17 Sagamore Road, Block 621, Lot 57, in the R3 Zone. I recommend that the board grant a C variance to legalize the driveway, front walk, and patio contrary to Sections 430-275, H and X, Sections 430-35, Column 13, subject to the testimony provided about the landscaping and blessing from the forester.
Second, Snyder.
Is there any discussion? Excuse me, Nora Coldroll?
Berkowitz. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Ireckin.
Yes. Result of the variance is granted. We'll memorialize this in two weeks, and then you'll be free to get your zoning permit. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, let's call case, um, 2213 Fritsner and Margaret Demore.
You both are gonna provide testimony? Raise your right hands if you swear, or do you swear from testimony about the reports yourself you got? And for the record, you're the owners of the subject property. You're sworn, have a seat. Thank you.
Have a seat. Make yourself comfortable. You're in an R3 zone, you have 17,000 square feet, which is a conforming lot. Right, this, sir, good. Shannon, and... Do you want to put a deck on the back of the house? That's it. What is the driveway that goes out the back of this house?
Oh, the driveway, we don't use that driveway. We just use it to put plants and, I mean, decoration and so...
Is it in good shape or is it all broken?
It's concrete.
It's concrete?
Yes, concrete.
And what was it for?
I mean, the driveway, this side driveway.
I'm talking about the driveway that goes to the back of your lot.
That's close to the back of the, yeah, it's concrete.
That's concrete?
Why is it there?
It's just a big patio?
Um, it is, I mean, it just, you know, it's simple driveway.
It was there when you bought the house?
I use it to decorate now since we put the gate. So we don't put any car, we don't park any cars.
Right, you can't get back, can't deal with a car.
Yes.
Was it there when you bought the house?
Yes, it was there.
And it's in good shape? It's not broken?
Good shape, yes.
Could've been a basketball court, yeah.
Um, all right, so, so the variance that you're looking for is impervious coverage. Now, the deck you're going to put on, this is going to be synthetic wood or wood or something like that?
Yeah, wood, yes.
Is there gonna, now what's underneath it? Is it just dirt underneath the grass?
Yeah, it's just dirt.
So there's gonna be a little space between the, uh...
Oh, of course, yes.
Space between it. So there will be an opportunity for some of the water to go through.
Yes.
And, and... The water should go through and not create runoff. Any other questions by the board?
What are you using this open deck for?
For the enjoyment of the family.
And it's specifically what, like?
Night.
Like, is it a patio where you put chairs on? Is it people playing?
Yeah, and just to relax, with family together, get together.
Like umbrella chairs, tables?
Umbrella chairs, that's fine, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board? The, the survey shows different patterns to the front driveway than whatever's paved around the side of the house, and then that concrete back. Are they all different material?
The concrete in the driveway is a black top and the, um, side, you know, other side is concrete, yes.
It's concrete?
Yeah. There are, this small side, but the side driveway is always, yes.
Don't have any major problem. My only concern is just the question. If, if you currently have 40% impervious coverage, you're putting a deck on, but it's gonna have flow, flow through water. It's not really impervious coverage, but it's covering a space, therefore that's why you're here for that other 6% impervious, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I have that right.
You're not interested in ripping out that corner black top while you're doing construction? You, you don't need this.
We're trying to lessen the impervious coverage of your property.
30% of that.
Yep.
That section that runs along the side of the house, that's concrete as well, or is that black top?
Uh, the side of the house is, uh, the other side, I mean, I mean...
If you stand in your driveway, looking at your house, the left side?
The left side is concrete, yes.
It's all concrete all the way?
It's all concrete all the way, yes.
What, what, what's the matter?
Right, I mean...
Was it a driveway or...
It, it probably used to be a driveway, but we, I mean, we...
It's too narrow for a driveway.
We just put flower plants, we just, I mean, decorated. Since we just put a new gate, you know, we just use it to decorate and, and planting.
Does it, does it go out to anywhere in the back, that back one?
Yes, it goes to the, I mean, to the backyard.
There's, I mean, no, if, if you didn't have the gate up there, does it exit onto, or is it just woods or trees behind it?
There is no trees behind it, no.
There's not a street back there either?
No.
Well, there's houses, there's houses back there. According to the tax, tax map, there's, uh...
Oh, yeah, there's not a lot there.
William Walker and, uh, somebody else.
Just trying to figure out why that's even there.
It looks like, yeah, it actually looks like the, the concrete is on Mr. Walker's property. He's taking hers. Oh, 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 okay. Yeah. Use a little cord. I, I think it would be admirable to have them remove part of that, of that rear part, but I think the expense of doing that would be significant. And they're only requesting a deck, which is going to probably not create much more in the way of impervious coverage, if at all. So if they just walked away, they, they would be where they are now and, uh, anyway. Any other questions by the board?
All right.
Yeah, we gotta... You're right.
I think I'm okay.
In part of your chart, the package for the zoning, page four. It's got a list of things to be removed.
Do you know what we're talking about?
Have you got the, have you got these reports?
No.
You do not?
Got it.
Did you tell the zoning officer you were gonna take some things out?
No, we didn't, I mean, probably, uh, this step, this, this...
Yeah, what is that for?
Yeah, we've taken one, I mean, the steps out.
I can't hear you, ma'am.
We're, we're putting the, the step out, we'll put a new one. You know, the side step. I mean, the, um, uh, the deck gonna be on the other side, not where the concrete plays. The deck have nothing to do with the concrete driveway.
No, but it increases your impervious, technically speaking. We, we, we understand what you're saying.
Everybody see page four?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can anybody figure out what that means?
No.
That's what I'm asking for.
I don't think to be, I don't think anything is to be removed.
Well, why is it all listed?
The, the only thing that would be removed is the concrete walkway that the deck is gonna be over.
gonna be over.
Oh, I...
That, that looks like from the proposed to the, um, you know, the current is removed.
And I'm working this, okay.
I think this is just the calculation by whoever did it, as to what the impervious coverage is.
That's what I think, too. I don't think there's anything being removed.
Why, why they say to be removed then?
I think it's just...
Because I, I don't think that, that line connects to anything below, because they're not gonna remove four thousand square foot of...
No.
No.
That's the coverage.
Then it becomes zero, pardon me.
Anything else, sports fans? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you wanna add, right? No? Okay. Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Um, again, it's not really increasing impervious coverage. What's there is there.
Yep.
We can't ask them to remove it.
I did have a question regarding the tuckaid fence in the back, that, um, is that the other side of the chain link fence? Do you maintain that or does the neighbor?
It's what the house, okay. If we maintain it, yeah, I mean, yes, we, we do.
You maintain it?
Yeah, yes.
She maintains it.
Okay, I was curious.
Someone like to frame a resolution?
The neighbors.
I'm on a roll. Application twenty-two thirteen, Fritzner and Margaret Demore, twenty-nine Woodcrest Road, block four twenty-three point one, lot twenty-four, in the R-three zone. I recommend the board grant a C variance to construct an open deck with two sets of stairs contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column thirteen.
Second Eddie.
Need discussion? Nora Calderon?
Urkelitz.
Yeah, yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willan.
Yes.
Irakim.
Yes. Result of the variance is granted. We'll memorialize this in two weeks and you'll be free to proceed.
Thank you.
Good luck. I would assume that now you see how much fun we have here, you'll be here after more appearances, right? Okay, let's call case, um, application twenty-two fifteen, Ketan Solanki, I'm not gonna try and pronounce the Mrs. Solanki's name, because I'm, I'm not, uh...
You raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about the board's true help you got?
Thank you.
And for the record, you're Ketan Przenki Solanki, and you're sworn.
Przenki.
Okay, thank you. And you're the owners of the subject property.
So you're look, you're looking to construct an open deck with stairs, a roof, open porch. You are in, I am assuming, an R-four zone in Lake Hiwata, and you have, duh, a six thousand square foot lot, you got a conforming lot. And you're looking for a two-foot side yards, concrete pad for deck, um, a yards and courts open deck, where twenty-four is allowed, and you're proposing twenty-seven point two, and a de minimis building coverage of point eighty-three over the twenty percent. Uh, why don't you describe your property and give us a little background on what you wanna do?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, good evening, uh, thank you for having us here. And, uh, we're currently resident of town, been in here for five years, uh, Lake Hiwata. It's a three-bed current property, we're looking to you manage the property. Uh, it's gonna be a five-bedroom, it's new construction, and, uh, currently live with my sister, my nephew, and my parents, who kind of travel back and forth between the U.S. and India. Uh, this is mainly for my dad, uh, we need the expansion because he has a rheumatoid arthritis, he needs to walk with, uh, a walker, and, uh, doctor recommends, uh, spending more time outside, walking and, uh, sitting in the sun. So, for that reason, we're seeking to get a bigger property and, uh, get, uh, extended deck and, uh, front porch.
Okay.
And this building, or this home has not been built yet?
No.
So the remainder part of the building is gonna be conforming? Is that?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah, yes.
There's somebody back there saying...
Yeah, he's my builder. He's my builder, yes, yeah.
Alright, the de, the deck is the same construction as we discussed the previous applicant. The rain will go through it. It's not gonna be tongue and groove.
No, there's no roof on the deck.
You're, you're gonna have spaces between the boards, they're not gonna be tongue and groove where they, where they mesh together.
Correct, they'll be spaced in between.
Okay, so, so you will have some drainage, and there's not gonna be concrete underneath it, it's gonna be just dirt below it.
Correct.
Right? And then you're gonna have small amount of, um, stairs, and you want a roof, open porch. Now how big is the roof, open porch?
So the porch size is gonna be four by fifteen.
Four by fifteen?
That's the porch size, and there's gonna be a roof covering that.
Can I just go back? You, Mr. Irakim said there's not gonna be a concrete pad underneath the deck, you said correct, with the, uh, the review has a concrete pad under the deck.
With the stairs.
The concrete pad for the deck.
For the deck, what's...
Do the stairs go down to the concrete?
For the stairs? Okay, okay.
The landing, yes, good word, good word.
Thank you.
Hopefully, okay.
Do you know if the roof porch is gonna be on a foundation or is it gonna be on pillars?
You're gonna have to come up and be sworn in.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony about the board's true help you got?
Yep.
I thank you, you're sworn, for the record, please state and spell your name.
Nakul Kasadwala, N-A-K-U-L-K-A-S-A-D-W-A-L-A.
Okay, thank you, you're sworn.[1620.12]